Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner, Commission Committee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 20th, 2015. It's 9:00 a.m. We will start with prayer by Commissioner Cole, and then we'll have the pledge by Commissioner Rob Williamson. Please stand.
Morning, everybody. Please join me. Gracious heavenly Father, as we come to you this morning, Lord, just keep us in mind that, Lord, we're simply stewards of that that you've given us charge of. Lord, keep us civil in our conversations, and ask that each one of us pray to you before we make a decision. Lord, look after our military and all the, those that look after us and protect us. And, Lord, we give you praise in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would ask anyone who has phones, please put them in a silent mode. Anyone wishing to speak today, make sure you fill out a speaker's form here at the front desk. At this time, we will approve the agenda for today. I'll start with my right with Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no additional items this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson and Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an add-on. It's an appointment for our planning and zoning slot that I have empty.
We will make that number 14 under the Administrative Committee. Mr. Rob Williamson.
Good morning, Chairman Salter, Board, Staff, and Santa Rosa County. No changes this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Litchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one add-on, like to add on as number three under the Economic Development Committee, a special announcement regarding new jobs in Santa Rosa County.
As you said, that'd be number three under Economic Development. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I do have one add-on that I had emailed the board out of Thursday from Ms. Harris regarding the contract with Donald R. Ward and Associates for Project Management for the Severe Repetitive Loss Grant for the elevation of a structure at 3135 Harrison Street in the Milton area. And these will be paid for with the FMAP funds.
Okay. That'll be number 15 under Administrative Committee. Roy?
No additions.
Roger?
Yes, we have one item. We'll have added as item number three under Engineers Report, and this is the design selection or design professional for the Berryhill Mill and Resurface project. As the board knows, this was originally one of our SCOP projects that were going to be withdrawn because we're no longer eligible for SCOP. DOT converted that to a LAP, which is a federal highway procurement process. We'll be receiving those proposals 10:00 a.m. in procurement. We will go through the process at the board's direction to develop a ranking. With the federal highway procurement process, you either accept number one, negotiate with number one off that ranking, or you interview all selected, all qualified engineers yourselves, and then select number one. Our recommendation is that you negotiate with the number one rank from the Ranking Committee for expediency. This project's got to be designed, must be completed and approved by DOT by May 31st so that we can go to a contract and get it constructed this summer.
Well, add that as number three under Engineers Report. Commissioner J.R. Williamson and I will be very excited to see that start. Ms. Bell?
No additions.
Okay. At this time, we will approve the agenda as amended without objection. Hearing none, it is, it is approved. At this time, we will go to the agenda. We'll start with our Economic Development Committee Chairman Elaine Litchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of a bid from Titan Specialty Construction, Inc. in the amount of $26,250 per acre for a two-acre parcel in the Santa Rosa Industrial Park pursuant to board pricing guidelines. There's backup in the agenda packet. Are there any questions, discussion about this? If not, I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the Florida Sports Foundation for marketing efforts of the Tough Mudder event to be held on March 7, 2015. Again, there's backup, and I think we've received some emails about this event. This is a reimbursement grant, so the, our costs would be reimbursed 100% through the grant. Shannon, do you want to speak about this?
Correct. This is a, this is a grant from the Florida Sports Association, and it's a $10,000 grant for, to promote this event on March the 7th. The, we're still working through some of the finer details about certificate of insurance. I gotta reach out to the, Kate this morning about the insurance. And just to let you know also, the economic impact, we have to have economic impact of at least $500,000 to be fully reimbursed for the grant. So if all those guidelines are met, we are reimbursed $10,000. I've seen from other economic impact, economic impacts from other locales that the impacts has ranged in the millions of dollars. So the, the impact that we receive will be on, will be beyond the 500,000, in my opinion. So, but I just wanted to make the board aware of that, that possibility out there.
Thank you, Shannon. And these events are, are well attended. They're expecting 5,000 people here for this event. They're nationwide, worldwide. Get a lot of publicity, a lot of participation, specifically with that targeted demographic age group.
Correct. The target demographic is from 18 to 40. They say this is a one-day event, the first time they've, they ever done a one-day event. And a, they said a good event will be 5,000 people, however, they typically average 8,000 individuals coming to an event. We, we visited with them last week. They were in town, met with key stakeholders, and hopefully getting up with you the, at the next round. And we're just trying to help them to promote this event. And one of the things we really pushed out to them is link up with the military bases, get the squadrons, get everyone on board to provide a huge impact because we're not just looking at this year, we're looking at for the next couple of years, how to get this thing more evolved to a two-day event.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was able to meet, and I apologize, I don't remember the young man's name, that's one of the heads of this. He's from England, and I met him shortly after he got off the plane, you know, the last week. And they're very excited about this. And then at the downtown redevelopment meeting that I sit on the board down there with the City of Milton, they were all, several other people that are project managers for this attended that downtown redevelopment meeting and indicated that the City of Milton is kind of the target area for like a afterwards party for all the participants and things like that. So I think it's, we're easily gonna cap that amount that we need to recapture. And there's excitement growing about this, both downtown and in East Milton, and I think it's gonna be a great event for our area, especially this time of the year when there's so little going on. You know, in the fall, we have our beaches and woodlands, and of course, in the summer, we got our beaches, but this is a great time of the year for it. And I anticipate it really growing and coming back again.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
Great job, Kyle and Julie, Shannon, thanks for helping us diversify, or trying to help us diversify our tourism dollar. Just one real quick question on the measurement. You mentioned that you anticipate we'll receive more than $500,000 in economic impact. I, I agree with you. Can you just give me some indication of how you plan to measure that so that we know as we move into year two or three that we're getting a good return on our investment?
Those impacts are actually measured by Tough Mudder. When individuals register, they put in their zip code, where they're from, how many nights they're staying, and that's the data we'll receive. They produce a standard economic impact study that they, they will turn over to us.
So that's part of the agreement, is that we would be able to get that data, letting us know the performance of the event through the online registration?
Correct. I mean, that's what agreement or part of the conversation I've been having with Tough Mudder. I mean, I have three reports here that are pretty standard they produce for other cities they've been, they've had that event in.
Well, thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Shannon. Unless there are any other questions, I will move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And the add-on, I'll bring Shannon back up here to do the introductions, but it is concerning what has heretofore been known as Project Airwolf in Santa Rosa County.
Thank you for the opportunity. We've been working with Project Airwolf for about 13 months now. And we've also, we've always stated that economic development and bringing in new jobs is a marathon, not a sprint. So like I said, over 13 months, we've been working with Greg and working through different locations, but we finally fell, fell on a site that both meet his requirements and his company's requirements. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Greg Bartlett with Aerosync Incorporated. Greg?
Thanks, sir. Good morning, gentlemen. Just want to say thank you for the support of the county. We're looking forward to getting things started, bringing good jobs, high-paying jobs to the area. We've been looking at this area, we've been in the Pensacola, Milton region for probably four years. And in the last two years, we've, we've really targeted this area because of the military sector out here. And we know that there's a really good opportunity to expand the aerospace market that exists here, excuse me, exists here, pardon me. And we believe we can definitely be growing our company from up to 25 good-paying jobs. We even foresee in the long-term future, probably close to 50 or more. And that's our plan for the, the next two-to-five-year business plan. Again, we really appreciate everybody's support, and we're looking forward to getting started.
Thank you, Greg. Welcome to Santa Rosa County. Just a little bit about Aerosync. You provide global onsite labor support for Bell and Sikorsky helicopters?
Yes, we do. Yeah, it's, it's primarily structural repair with maintenance, and then we, we tie in other companies from different parts of the country, and they, they specialize in each of the different areas of the helicopter, and we kind of synchronize that surface and bring it all here into this location here.
Great, great. And work with private sector as well as the military?
Private sector, commercial, and, and military in the, in domestic and global. The idea as well is to bring a lot of the, you know, our domestic military work that ends up in Texas or Alabama, and bring a portion of that to this section of Florida.
Great. That's what we, we want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, no action on that item, but the, good news for Santa Rosa County. The Governor's Office will also be releasing a, a press release later today about that. So you'll be able to learn a little bit more about Aerosync and, and what they're bringing to Santa Rosa County. And that concludes the Economic Development Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Litchard. And I'd also like to say welcome to Santa Rosa County. I think aerospace is certainly the future of this county, and I'm glad that you're part of it. Thank you. At this time, we will move to the Administrative Committee. Number one, discussion of assignment of lease with Holycorp and Amphi Investments for financing of construction of a hotel on the Bar Beach. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your package, you see the email that I got from Mr. Bobey, who represents Amphi in, in, on, on the beach. They were asking, and is, is required by the, the lease that I believe that we have to take action on this. I expected somebody from Amphi or Holycorp to be here to make the presentation and... So anyway, I mean, you, you see what's in the, in the backup, and you, and...
This, this action won't change anything. It's just another company taking over. Is that my understanding, Roy?
My, my understanding would be that they would be establishing probably a single-purpose LLC for the purpose of obtaining financing. Under the provisions of our lease, they do have to obtain our written consent to assign the lease, and the provisions say that it won't unreasonably with, be withheld. They would then, as part of the financing process, issue a mortgage on the lease. The lease that they have specifically provides that they can mortgage it without our consent. So this is pretty much a ministerial issue at this point.
You don't see any downside for the county on this?
They, the entity that gets, that has assigned the lease has, has the same responsibilities and rights as Holycorp and Amphi, so it really doesn't change the legal issues. Again, I'm surprised that they don't have somebody here that would, would give us a little bit more of the, of the details because we're, I mean, all we know is what you've got in the backup, frankly. But, but they, the, the lease assignment is not going to either increase or decrease their rights and responsibilities, or change, increase or decrease the rights and responsibilities of the, of the county.
Discussion by the board, Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, I've got some concern with this. We've, it's been over 10 years now since the hurricane took this hotel or motel off our beach. The original contract says to build, maintain, and manage a hotel property. And even if you give the, the leasie five years to reconstruct a hotel out there, there's been five to six years now that Santa Rosa County hasn't seen any type of income off this. And then a while back, we made some concessions to kind of get this thing off dead center, and those still haven't happened. And I've got a concern that, you know, one, you know, the citizens of Santa Rosa County, you know, we don't have an income coming from that as we should have. Two, that, you know, that's kind of an anchor. That's the biggest piece of property on the Gulf of Mexico in Santa Rosa County, and it's sitting vacant and has for years. The concessions we made were in order, I think, to get this thing moving forward in actual construction of a hotel. Now, it looks like this is just a, kind of a end run or something to keep prolonging that. And I fully seen, felt like with what we talked about months ago, that by now, we'd see a hotel, motel coming up out of the ground. Last time I was by there, there was one little bulldozer and two dumpsters there, and I don't hardly think that makes a hotel. There's no, there's no vacancy sign in front of it or hanging off of any of those pieces. So I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, there's very possibly a breach of contract here in the original lease, and that we shouldn't do something to either set a drop-dead date on, on actual start of construction and identify what we consider start of construction and an ending date, or that we assign our county attorney to look into this in more of a tougher case to maybe see if we have ability to remove the name from this lease and put it back out there for an entity that may want to get things moving. I think we've been nice long enough. It's time to play hardball, I guess, is all I could...
Well, the lease was amended in, in the 23rd of June, 2014, and the, the new lease provides that lessy shall commence construction of a hotel within six months and shall complete construction within 15 months of commencement. It does have a provision that if the lessy is unable to build the improvements, the lessy shall have 24 months from the date of the, of the agreement to market and sell the lease hold. The, our regulations define start of construction as being the placement of permanent construction of a structure on a site. It, it has to be something more than land preparation, like clearing, filling, or grading, which is, I think, at best, all that's taking place on the, on the property out there. The provisions of the lease are if we feel that we're, that the lessy is in default, we have to give them notice thereof, and they have 30 days in which to, to cure the default. I think that, under my readings of the provisions of the lease in regard to commencing construction, they, they have not complied with that, with that.
And I think another concession we made, we lessened the number of rooms, I believe. The old motel had 150.
The, the original lease was 200 rooms. The amended and restated is for 150. And there is...
I just really, I, I think we need that motel out on our beach. I, I know with the growth we're seeing in the Bar and everything else that's going on out there, beach renourishment and everything, for us to wait any longer, we're not doing our job. I think, I think we need to do something to stimulate this or hold our feet to the fire, however you want to legally verbiage that is, is fine with me, but I just want them to know we're, you know, as long as the rest of the board's in agreement, we're, we're serious about this. We, we want to see something happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rob Williamson.
The county attorney, the agreement that we have in place, that the next step for us to take, any action would be the, to go ahead and notify them of a letter of default, correct?
That's correct.
That would be my recommendation, is that the next step for us to take is to send them the letter of default, to give them 30 days to comply with the agreement. The clock is ticking, and I think we want to be good partners with them. I'm quite surprised that they're not here to address this. I don't know what the will of the board is. I don't know if we want to table this until the end of the Administrative Committee to see if, you know, take no action until the end of the Administrative Committee report and see if somebody maybe was on the way that could speak on behalf of Holycorp. But short of tabling this item until the end of the Administrative Committee, I would like to recommend that we go ahead and provide the notice of default, and I would make that in a form of a motion.
Do we add that to the, make that the item Thursday?
Yes.
I was gonna say, whatever action we, we take is gonna be for Thursday and not, not today, so they'll have an opportunity to respond between now and Thursday as well. So what I'm hearing is for Thursday, to draft a letter of default, send to the Holycorp and Amphi Investments, letting them know that they have 30 days to respond, and that's, I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. The incentives that were agreed to be provided by this board, Roy, those only take effect if a building is constructed. So would it be fair to say that at this point, we have not spent or allocated any money or, and provided any incentives, correct? Your mic, Roy.
We, we have transferred the funds from one...
Yes. Two years of them, around $77,000. So yes, they have been granted some concessions.
In the interest of clarity, could you repeat that again? Have they, have the incentives been provided to Holycorp?
Yes, they have. Two years of incentives.
To remind the board, what we did is we caught, I believe, we, we, we essentially used economic development funds to catch up the utility on their tap fees, and then, I believe, going forward from, from 1 January of 14, they, they began paying the, the tap fees on the 100, and I believe it was 162 taps, as it ended up for the RV. So they've been paying us about $11,000, give or take, a, a month on the utilities. But yes, we, in order, we, we brought up there a rearage, if you will, for, for some period of time to make the utility whole, I believe it was. Whenever they had, I believe, going back to 2010, we'll have to go back through the action the board took, but I believe it was, they had turned down or defaulted on the utilities at that, at that point.
And for Thursday, Roy, if you could just let us know what remedy we have, if any, if, you know, they do end up ultimately defaulting on this agreement to recover any of those funds.
I'll just have to look at, at the actions of the board previously.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Walker, haven't they, they've also caught up on their taxes? Am I correct on that?
They have paid the taxes due. That was a precondition to the amendment of the lease, was that they paid the taxes due during, or through 2014. Now, whether they have paid the 2014 taxes, I can't say, but they, they did catch up the rearage, which was substantial.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
To the county administrator, we have, did you have discussion with them that they were supposed to be here today? Is that...
They asked it to be placed on the agenda, and, and placed it on the agenda with their understanding they'd have somebody here.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't realize, I, obviously, when somebody's asking you for some piece of information, I assume they're gonna come protect their interest.
Once again, is anyone here from Holycorp? Okay. We'll move on to number two. Discussion of amendment to management agreement with Juana's Incorporated to allow installation of an ice machine adjacent to the county boat ramp. Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the agreement that you have with Juana's, Inc., and we're amending that, as you see from the site plan, which the, the, the site plan is part of the agreement, and it's to include a, a, I guess, a portable ice machine on the, as you see in, in certain locations, on that portion of the Juana's property. So this is just a, and then that will enable us to, it'll allow them to place the, the ice machine, and then we would be able to receive the 5% gross receipts from that.
My question is gonna be, should we do an RFP on it? Because I know we've had some people in the past that's been interested in doing the same thing, but since it's already part of their site plan that's been approved, then that's a no issue.
When we've had people, when we've had people want to put it on, on, on public property, is, 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 we've discouraged that. In fact, the folks came to us with this, and we recommended that they place it on some kind of, one of our, our, our lessies, on, commercial leases on the beach. First, it'll help the, the commercial lessies, and then we get the 5% in that regard. If we're gonna take property, we would have to do, obviously, do an RFP and then, and then manage it. So this is, this is on their property that they currently are responsible for. As, in, in the past, if you recall, the board's amended the lease every time they added a structure. I believe the last time was the, the... I believe the last time was the, the boardwalk in the, the, uh, open air center down there.
Any other comments? Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I had the same concern or same question about whether it would be within the existing footprint of, of the Juana's site, and it is, so that was, that settled my concerns about the need to go out for bid if it's, uh, or, or an RFP. I'm comfortable with, uh, with it as long as it's in the footprint of the original lease.
Okay. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three, discussion of placement of additional two volleyball courts and placement of an additional storage unit at the Navar fishing pier. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is, is, is an email with that request and Ms. Maddox is here, uh, with Coastal Concessions, uh, on, on that particular request. You see there's a two-part request. There's the, the additional volley, volleyball, uh, court, if you will, or property designated for that. Uh, and then there's the, uh, additional storage units that are, as you can tell from the photo, uh, currently in the, um, parking area. Uh, I believe the lease anticipates a, a, uh, allowing the, the, uh, lessee to use sto- utilize storage, quote, under the pier.
Okay. Name an address.
Ms. Maddox is here to speak to that.
Name an address, please.
Stephanie Maddox, I'm the general manager for Coastal Concession and I live on Navar Beach.
Tell us anything you want us to know.
Um, with the, uh, the additional volleyball nets, we signed up with ESPN and, um, USA Volleyball. Right now, we have three. We just repositioned the volleyball nets we already had. And I guess to accommodate all of the divisions, we'd like to add two more. It's not in the flow of traffic, but it's also not on the property that we're responsible for, so we would need permission before. And it's not something you can temporarily put up, you know, for a weekend and then take down. It's a lot of work. It takes probably 12 hours to put up a net, you know, and they're there to stay through the weather. And I'd hate for them just to put them up on a Wednesday and take them down on a Sunday. So.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Commissioner Rob Williamson.
The access to the beach would not be impeded based on where you're putting the two additional courts, right?
No, sir.
I'm, I'm in support of the court. I think it's great that you're bringing in the, the tournament. That's, that's what we should be using the area for. If we can get more people going to our pier, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
But I just want to make sure that folks aren't going to be having to go around those volleyball nets to get back to the cut through to get to the beach.
No, sir, there'd be a, a very clear path.
Okay.
And it, and we also made sure that it wouldn't, like the path for the pavilion that's right there, it's also going to be clear. It wouldn't be in the way at all.
Okay. And the existing sand sculpting competition that we have and other, um, events that we hold in that area, will it impact those in any way?
We would take them down for the sand sculpting event.
Okay.
Because they, they extend on out, it, it would be a conflict, but we would take them down. We wouldn't, you know, for any event that's planned there, we would remove them.
Okay. So, we just leave the posts in place and take the nets down?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, just wanted to comment, the enclosure that you've done on the pier is real nice. It's, uh, definitely an asset to us out there. It looks, looks good and it's nice being out of the wind this time of the year. And then I also wanted to say that, uh, you know, I've been out there several times and the, and the food's great and everything. And then I spoke to Ms. Bell a little earlier this morning and found out, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bell, but our revenue from the pier last year was up about $100,000 from what we expected, so.
From what we budgeted.
So, that's a, that's a good thing, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, and it'll be up even more next year, so.
Very good.
And if you guys haven't tried the food, you know, you can come in. We have a different menu now and you all, of course, would eat free, so.
Any other comments by the board? I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection and we'll make a decision on Thursday. But I hear positive things today, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, um, this was a two-part matter. Uh, the, the first part was the volleyball nets and then we have a second part that is the off-site storage facility.
I'd move both of them to Thursday's agenda without objection.
I would object, Mr. Chairman, uh, related to the storage facility. Um, I'd, I'd like to make some comments about that if I could.
Okay.
The agreement provides for storage, I, I sent an email on this. I, I have some concerns with the metal storage container that's currently being placed in the parking area there in front of the pier. Uh, the agreement, the lease agreement, I believe, uh, Roy, the, the lease agreement provides for storage underneath the pier, is that correct?
Contractor shall be permitted to store certain items-
Need the, need the mic on, Roy?
I thought I had, excuse me. Contractor shall be permitted to store certain items beneath the pier in enclosure acceptable to the county, is the language of the lease.
Roger, uh, did Terry or anybody from the county approve putting, uh, off-site or a different kind of storage than this agreement provides for?
Yes, I, I, in my email to Hunter, misspoke. Terry said that he didn't grant necessarily permission for it to go in that parking lot. It's my understanding they attempted to put it under the pier and it wouldn't fit and by default, they went there, but not with explicit permission.
Well, I know y'all had some challenges getting up and running and we certainly didn't want to do anything that would delay that any further and we want you to be successful. Or I don't want to speak for the whole board. I want you to be successful. I would imagine they do as well, but, um, I don't know any other way to say it other than I don't think we can eliminate the parking and it doesn't meet with the, uh, spirit of the agreement. And I just don't think that's the look that we're going for, is to have a metal storage facility out there, um, as folks are going to be coming to and from what is one of the best assets we have in the county. Um, so, I would like to see you use the storage underneath the pier and then if you require additional storage, that you're going to have to rent or make some other kind of provision to store things off-site. But I certainly don't approve of the metal container being placed in the parking area and there's no way I could approve of adding to it and expanding it to add a second storage facility. So, I, I definitely would welcome the comments of my fellow board members on this, but, um, I, I don't think that's something that I could necessarily agree with.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I had some of the same, excuse me, some of the same concerns Rob did. You know, it's, it's not an attractive, uh, it's a shipping container that's in a, in a parking space. I would be fine with some sort of onsite container, working with staff to determine a, an appropriate location, some small storage building or if this were shielded completely so that, you know, you couldn't see the, the storage container. If you have a dumpster, you have to have it fenced. Um, so, something, you know, some, some, some fencing, some privacy fencing around it, something to make it, uh, more attractive. Um, but I certainly understand the need for you to have readily available storage at the, the pier. Um, I think we just have to come up with a better way to do it. And, uh, I would support having them work with staff to come up with a plan for some more permanent, attractive, uh, onsite storage. Uh, if it can't be done under the, the, uh, pier building, then, then somewhere in that area.
Yeah, if it, if it, if it's outside of the, the lease, we would bring it back to you. If it can go under the building is the lease and, under the pier is the lease anticipates, we, we'll handle that administratively, but obviously if there's some other alternate that they need to shield and do, what you're talking about is, we, we would need to bring that back to the board because that would be outside of the lease.
Yeah. And I mean, it's a small footprint, it's one parking space or maybe two that we would lose. Um, and I think, you know, in the long run, I wouldn't have a problem with that as long as we can make it attractive and, and, you know, not detract from the, the overall aesthetics of the area. So, if you would, just try to come up with a, a better plan for the, the storage, work with staff down on the beach and, uh, work with Commissioner Williamson, it's his district down there, try to come up with something that, um, that's more attractive, but that's going to suit your needs.
Okay, so what, what we're going to move to Thursday is going to be, uh, the addition of two volleyball courts, uh, with the understanding that any storage other than under the pier, you're to get the staff and, and work out a plan on, uh, how you're going to do that.
Yeah, and I think we'd have to amend the agreement if, if we were going to do that. Once again, to be clear, I'm not comfortable with any off-site storage. I, I believe that, you know, the agreement provides for storage underneath the pier and taking away or losing a parking space or having storage, even if we pretty it up with landscaping. To me, um, I just, I'm not comfortable with that, so it'd have to be some pretty nice, aesthetically pleasing shielding, uh, to meet, um, the hurdle that I'm looking at. Um, and hopefully we can, you know, hopefully you can reconfigure things, do what you need to do to use the storage underneath the pier and hopefully that'll be adequate for you. If not, then I feel it needs to come back before the board because we're amending the agreement and that's certainly not a decision I could make.
And that's pretty much what I said. Just get the staff, work out a plan on your storage, uh, any deviation from the original plan, it'll be brought back to the board for our, either up or down, so. You understand? Okay. Thank you very much. I would move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number four, discussion of whole harmless agreement with Tiki Tara's LLC for fimming on county property adjacent to the Navar Beach wastewater treatment plant. Didn't I see where they had withdrawn?
Yeah. And I should have, when, when you asked for the amendment to the lea-, I meant to the agenda, I should have. I was just thinking of add-ons, I didn't think about the, the deletion.
Okay, that has been withdrawn, so no action on that. Number five, discussion and request from City of Milton for $51,303 from boat registration fee revenue for installation of intermittent, intermittent boating registration signage on Blackwater River as authori-, authorized by Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. I see we have Mr. Brian Watkins with us and Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your, your packet is the letter, uh, from, from the mayor to, to you and, and, and in the backup is the, the backup that the board had approved, the, the city pursuing this, uh, boat registrat-, or boat restriction signage, uh, in the Blackwater River, really pretty much around the, the area of downtown, uh, that would anticipate, uh, uh, the intermittent change in the restriction, primarily doing, I believe it was events, whether it's river fest or, or some of the other type things. Uh, boat registration fees are an acceptable use, uh, uh, for, uh, the installation of the signs. That's one of the, the, the items that's anticipated, or was anticipated by the, the state legislature. That's the, that's the source of revenue that, that we, we use, if you will, when we, when we have to install, uh, boat restriction signage. And it's gotten pretty expensive with the specifications over the last number of times from FWC that Mr. Whitfield can speak to. But there's no city or county boat registration fees. Boat rec-, boats are registered, uh, at the, the, the tax collector, uh, and, and they really don't know a, a political jurisdiction. So, it, it's a use, Mr. Watkins can speak to, to any of the, any of the questions.
Any questions by the board? Commissioner Jerryl Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What would be a year's revenue for, on these boat registration fees?
I want to say that probably off the top of my head, around $70,000, um, uh, 70 or 75.
And, and do we have in the budget, um, I mean, that we've accrued over th- through the years, what would that amount be right now?
Currently, I believe it's just under 200,000. It, I think in, in, as of December 31st, it was 198, uh, 291.
And what other, um, what other items or what other things in the past have we paid for out of this, uh, this revenue source? What have we paid?
Good question. It's, it's prescribed specifically by the legislature. You can, we, we, you can improve, um, boat ramps themselves, the launches, uh, I believe we've used them for, for dockage or piers, uh, that are associated with the, the ramps. Uh, we've used them for the, the boat restriction signage and you can use them in, in, for derelict vessel, uh, removal and, and to expand a boat ramp, to expand parking for boat ramps. So, uh, you can't use it for what I'd call, for, you can't use it for pavilions or picnic tables or other amenities associated with a boat launch. It really has to be, uh, uh, pretty melt, pretty much, uh, directly tied to, to boating. Maybe if I missed anything, uh-
For clarification, we have approximately $200,000 now and we can expect $70,000 per year estimated?
That's correct.
Is that correct? And, um, have we recently, say in the last year or two, done any improvements to boat ramps using this funding source?
In the, in the, we, we used a, a significant portion of it, I believe, maybe about two years ago, uh, two budgets ago by now, uh, for the, uh, new, new launch up on, uh, Scambia River. Um, but really, I believe in the last couple of years, it's, it's just been, uh, small repairs to, uh, boat docks, boat ru-, uh, boat ramps and maybe some signage. In the last two years, we might've had the, um, uh, boat restriction signage out there at Jim's Fish Camp in that area.
And, and does anybody know the approximate cost of what those improvements were at the Scambia River? Are we talking, you know, 20 or 30,000? Are we talking 50 to 100? I mean, just a ballpark, couple hundred thousand dollar improvements?
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, significant.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that was around $300,000 and some of that was for the property acquisition.
Could you give a ballpark as far as the improvement to the, the ramp itself without the property? And I'm just trying to get in my mind what it costs to, um-
Actually, it had, it was building the whole, whole facility. It was, I believe if I recall, it was parking, uh, uh, the ramps, I believe two ramps.
There's, there's one ramp. It was, it was the roadway going in there. It was the drainage improvements. It was the whole development of a brand new ramp.
Right.
Uh, so it was property, the property acquisition, I, I believe was, and I, I may not be exact on this, but I want to say the property acquisition was a little over $100,000 and then the, the improvements to the ramp or developing a brand new ramp was around $200,000 in rough figures, if, if my memory is correct. But that was, uh, retention, ponds, stormwater facilities, roadway, ramp, parking, everything to do with construction of a new ramp.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield.
And I believe it was a little over $300,000 total.
I just wanted to get a kind of my idea because, um, I mean, that is a, a pretty big expenditure with the money that we have there and, and I know that it can be used in that source, but also don't want to take away with some, something that we may have come in the next year or two with the county that we need to take care of. I don't want to strap us in the future. But that, that was just, you know, just for clarification, that's why I'm asking those questions.
And I don't know of anything specifically that we've, that, that we would have for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've, we've had, seems like every year, maybe a couple of times a year, the City of Milton will ask for us to assist in, in getting those temporary restrictions placed along the river there for events. I know we've done that several times. So, this would eliminate the need to come back and do those temporary restrictions because, and then, secondly, how, it says intermittent restrictions, so they're flip signs and who determines when they flip? The City of Milton? I see Roger's pointing out at, at Brian.
Let me speak one other thing, that in the past, we have used, uh, if I recall, boat registration fees, uh, at the Shoreline Park. I think we did some channel, seems like we did some channel marking or, or, or something. Then we also, I believe, removed a derelict vessel from-
We, we have, we've, we've used those funds to remove derelict vessel from Shoreline Park as well as the Symphonia, the metal boat that was down in Navar. Seems like in the past, the funds were available for more purposes, um, but they restricted the use of those funds eight or 10 years ago. They'd be in the state, so we're real limited on what we can spend them on now. I don't recall having, since I've been here, um, used any of the boaters improvement funds on the Blackwater River. So, this, you know, this is a, a chance to kind of spread it around. I know we've used some up in the, the north end of the county, um, on the new ramp, uh, some in, in Navar.
Navar Beach.
And then Gulf Breeze, so. And with the focus on the Riverwalk down there, uh, in, in downtown Milton, I think it's, you know, controlling the speed of the boats, as a boater myself, um, it, it is important if you want to grow the, the area and have more boats willing to tie up alongside the pier there. Anything you want- Anything you want to add, Brian? When are you guys gonna flip the signs?
Yes, sir. I mean, that is basically what it was, and what the procedure here was, the fact that we are working on focus on trying to have more events downtown, more focus on the river to improve economic development, tourism in the area. And I think until we get to the point to where we can control the speed of boats and the boating access to the river, it's hard to do that. What this application does, is it does, is allows the city council to make, people can make applications to the city council for, to activate the boating restricted zones in these areas. And then, and it is that the design of the signs are hinged in the middle so that they can be closed down when the, and when the area is not in effect, or when we make, excuse me, or when the city council approves it, they can be put up and, you know, and activate the zones at that point. And that's basically what it was, is to give us the, it actually gives the city council control of that section of the river from Fish and Wildlife, who we had to go through. We were probably, this has probably been a two-year process from start to finish in getting the ordinances approved, the applications approved, the permits approved, everything associated with it, the design of the signs and everything that goes with it.
Mr. Rob Williamson.
Brian, just one quick question, or maybe this is a question for staff. This was recommended by our Marine Advisory Committee.
It was. We did make application to Marine Advisory, and they go through them.
Thanks.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple things. We didn't get a map. It says in here that there's a map. And also, I didn't understand about the comment. It says, "This will complement the adjacent vehicle speed restriction, reduce confusion of vessel speed, as well as the amount of markers needed to post regulations." Almost makes me think, do we already have speed limit signs out there?
We do. The area Quinn Bayou, around Carpenter's Park, goes up around Carpus Park, there is now, and has been, for as long as I know about, a no-wake zone, an idle-speed no-wake zone there. And with this, that will continue to be an idle-speed no-wake zone. And then the section along the Blackwater River is really a slow-speed minimum wake zone, is what the permit allows for.
Okay. And without having a map, how many signs are we...
There are nineteen, there are actually nineteen signs total for the total instance.
Okay.
The boating safety zones are actually divided into three areas, one of which is around the train trestle, one around the Riverwalk area, and then one around Russell Harbor Landing Boat Dock. And in the process of doing this, you know, for say, Fourth of July, you might want to put the boating restricted area around the trestle and the Riverwalk, but not Russell Harbor Landing, because there's usually a lot of activity, skiing and that sort of stuff. So it gives a tremendous amount of flexibility on when and where and how long that the areas can be activated.
And this price includes jetting in, piling and for the sign placement and all that?
Entire thing. It's a turnkey operation.
Because when you look at fifty thousand dollars for a few speed limit signs, it, you know, kind of confused me for a moment, but knowing now that it's nineteen signs, that some of them have to be jetted in.
This is the sign acquisition, pilings, installation, building, the whole deal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the upkeep of the signs, or if there's broken signs or anything, would that fall in the city, or is that going to fall back on this board?
At that point, I think it does. We currently do all the work, the, on the signs that we currently have out there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not saying that I won't ever come back and ask you for a dollar here and there, but for the most part, right now, that does fall in the city, Milton.
Brian, just for the record, give us your name and your address.
Brian Watkins, sixty-seven thirty-eight Dixon Street, North Florida.
Hearing no other questions, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Thank you, Brian. Number six, discussion of deferring appointments to the Santa Rosa Bay Bridge Authority pending clarification on officers and directors liability insurance coverage. I know we've talked about this a lot lately. We've had some emails from our county attorney. Roy, you have anything you want to add?
I have tried several times to get in touch with the council for the trustee by the telephone, and haven't gotten, haven't gotten a return call. So at this point, the errors and omissions policy that's in place for the Bridge Authority Board will expire shortly. They, I have inquired as to whether or not the trustee is willing to fund that. I have a concern on having Santa Rosa County appointments to that board if they're not protected from any type of action. And without that, I would say that we'd be exposing our volunteers to liability that they really should not have to bear without the protection of that policy. And further, if the, it's kind of a minimal impact on the trustee, and if they're not willing to fund that, and, I mean, they're not paying administrative expenses, even to the extent of paying for advertising of the meetings, I'm not really sure how effective the, a somewhat reconstituted board would be without having any type of relationship with the trustee. So I think if we appoint folks and we don't have any way for them to be effective, or any cooperation from the trustee who is, in fact, handling the bridge at this point, it'd be kind of ineffective and moot.
Any discussion by the board? Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman. Along the same lines of the bridge, we finally got a date set for Representative Broxton and myself to attend a meeting in Orlando, and that's eleven-thirty on February twenty-sixth. I would like the board to be cognizant of that, but also, anything like this that the board feels I need to carry with me, as far as a message, since Roy can't get him on the phone, perhaps we need to develop some talking points. And I'd ask the board also that if there's a will of this board, if we're unsuccessful, and I think the main goal that we're going to try to achieve is a discounted pass for county citizens, if they won't lower the price or keep the price as it is. In brief discussion I've had with Representative, that maybe our goal is to try to get Santa Rosa County citizens where they have a economical way of crossing that bridge. And I'm not sure what the outcome will be, but I'd like, and I don't need an answer today, we've got time between now and February for this board to decide if, in support of our citizens that may not be willing to use the bridge any longer, if this board would have a will to lessen the amount of sun passes that we have on our county vehicles to support that cause. So just something I want to throw out there so we can all be thinking about it, and be glad to carry any message that this board wants to, wants me to on February twenty-sixth to the folks down in Orlando.
Commissioner Cole, I agree with you. I think as y'all prepare for that meeting, it would be appropriate for you to have a county position paper, even though we don't have any authority over the bridge, we certainly can still have a position on it. So I would hope that Mr. Andrews will start working on some type of position paper that he can bring back to us prior to y'all's trip on February the twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Number seven, discussion of additional grants manager position in response to workload changes relative to Restore Act responsibilities. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to board action, I believe at the last meeting, is the Human Resources Director and the current project grants and special projects director, and I met to review options we had. Our recommendation would be to fund the position for the grant special projects manager, and I believe that has an opening salary of about forty-three thousand dollars, and to move forward with that position. Once that position's on board, get them trained, and that way we can move Ms. Harris more towards the restore coordinator position, I believe that the board envisioned. So we've outlined the plan. We think this is the best mechanism to use. There's one other position that we had that actually is a coordinated position, and it requires a two-year degree. This requires a four-year degree, and I believe just, we will be able to be more effective with Ms. Harris and then a trained person to do really more of the day-to-day things in the grants administration piece that she's currently doing, certainly with her oversight and experience. But this would, this will give us a way to transition or move incrementally in that direction.
Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Number eight, discussion of addendum number one to agreement to the third-party administrator TPA services with John's Eastern Company Incorporated for County Workers Compensation Fund as recommended by the Human Resource Director. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, this is the third-party administrative contract with John's Eastern. They're a very good firm. They've done well with us. Actually, it's a reduction in their cost based on the fact that they're no longer having to, we no longer are responsible for the sheriff's office workers' comp, so obviously that, this reduces their contract in that regard.
Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Number nine, discussion of renewal agreement with Stone Ridge Counseling Center Incorporated for Employee Assistance Program, also known as EAP, at current rates. Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Number ten, discussion of allocation in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cent for outdoor movie night events at Santa Rosa Sportsplex, sponsored by the Pace Athletic and Recreation Association, Para, from District One Recreation Funds. My only question is, where will the screen be? Mr. Walker.
Your only question is what?
Where will the screen be?
Can I answer this?
Please.
You know, being a new commissioner, one thing that you do, the kind of fun thing is the Parks and Recreation, that you get to go out and talk to your community about what they're wanting in their parks and rec. We have our first meeting Thursday night for the official advisory council, but having a good relationship with your local sports organizations, Para is mine, and Commissioner Salter's, is very important. One thing that's lacking in the Pace area is a community event, and I know that the Parks and Rec Fund has generally been for playgrounds and ballfields and other things like that. Commissioner Cole, you have a municipality in your district, as well as Commissioner Lynchard's, that puts on some of these type events. That's generally been more of a municipality than a county effort. Commissioner Williamson, you have a chamber, Navar Chamber, that puts on some events that does a great job in the community. Pace was lacking a community event, so trying to raise money for Para and also trying to have a community event was something that I wanted to try to think of what we could do. So speaking with Para, I came up, we came up with the idea of doing outdoor movie series. It'll be the four Friday nights in March. It's a forty-three-foot screen that will sit in the end zone of the Para football field. We're going to have sponsorships. I could have simply written a check and out of my fund to Para for ten thousand dollars, or I could spend a little bit more than that, and probably they're going to be able to raise, what we're hoping, around fifteen thousand. As many of you knew, know, they had their gators stolen, so raising some money to maybe pay for those gators, which were around twelve thousand dollars that they had stolen from the complex. This would be a good fundraiser for them, and at the same time, it's going to have that community event in Pace that I think the Pace community is really going to support. We have young families, a lot of families, and it's going to be all family-friendly movies. If you look in your backup documents, we're not allowed to advertise them because we haven't paid for the agreements and approved it yet, but you can see that we're talking, you know, some of the latest movies, Penguins of Madagascar, Night at the Museum Three, How to Train a Dragon Two, and Big Hero Six. So they're movies that are still in theaters right now, and it's going to be a great way for them to raise money at Para. It's going to be a great way for us to have a community event that we can be prideful in that great community of Pace. And Commissioner Salter, I know you always joke that you're the commissioner for North Pace, and I'm the commissioner of South Pace, so I'd like to put to you, if you would go in half with me out of your rec funds to support this event, I'm going to go ahead and put you on the spot, Commissioner.
Once again, the language says outdoor movie night events at the Santa Rosa Sportsplex. That should be Para football park, right?
That should be Para football field, yes, sir. It's going to support Sportsplex as well as the football. They can use that funding, because the, you know, the sponsorships go into them. They can use that money for their baseball, their cheer, their football, or anything, but it is going to be at the football field.
Okay. As long as I get to watch the Dragon movie, I'll commit to half.
So we need to make an amendment to this, that it'll be half-funded from District One and half-funded from District Three?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda with the changes that we just made without objection here, and then it passes. Number eleven, discussion of declaration as surplus property items from the Environmental Department and Office of the Public Defender as recommended by the Clerk of the Courts. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, all the two memos from Mr. Spencer's staff regarding the declaration of surplus property, and I believe this will enable them to place these items on the website with the current vendor that they have.
Any discussion by the board?
Yeah, I assume we will continue just to do this. Normally, what we've done in the past, when we've had the one sale a year, is we've typically waited till, one time in the year, we've accumulated these and done them at one time. I think there, the clerk's office is having us declare these surplus more or less as they become available, so they can go ahead and have them marketed on the, by the firm. So this will be, this is a change from how we've done it in the past, just to, so you probably would, I would assume, probably get one or two of these a meeting. I would not be surprised. We'll just have to see. But it's just a little different how we've done it in the past.
Mr. Spencer, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Walker's correct on that. It's easier for us to do this periodically, is this, the surplus comes available instead of having it stored somewhere and then pulling it out. This company will come and mark the surplus, price it, take pictures of it, put it on the internet, and take care of all the sales of it. So it's, I think it's going to be very beneficial to the county.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Number twelve, discussion of constellation agreement with U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission regarding disability discrimination claim. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is that agreement covered with a memo from the county attorney. This was a EEO complaint we had from an employee with a disability, and one of the requirements that are the requirement of the agreement is that we have to provide some training on disability, how to handle that in the workplace. We would recommend this agreement.
Any comments by the board? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here, and then it passes. Number thirteen, information-only public hearing item scheduled for nine-thirty a.m. Thursday, January the twenty-second. We have none. This time, we'll move to two add-ons. Number fourteen, planning and zoning board recommendation for Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had a, since Commissioner Williamson became a commissioner, I've had a vacant point on my planning and zoning board. He served on that for probably a total of five years, perhaps?
Just starting my fourth.
Fourth year, okay. And done very well, always represented District Two in an outstanding fashion, and I thank him for that. fashion, and I thank him for that. At this time, though, I have a blank space on that sheet, and I'd like to nominate James Dabney. He's asked me several times to be on that board and serve, and I'd like to move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Any comments by the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. J. Williamson.
I have one objection, and this is nothing personal against you, Commissioner Cole, or Mr. Dabney, because first of all, he's done a great job in the Navarre community as far as the bathrooms went. The only concern that I have, or the main concern, is James, and he's stood before us before and admitted this, sometimes he's asked for forgiveness instead of permission, and has consistently violated some of the things with planning and zoning. So, I could not support that, and that's nothing against you, James, if you're listening. I'll still be eating at the River Smokehouse as much as I can, but I just can't, I can't support somebody who, I can't put staff in the situation of supporting somebody who's had violations in the past few years when it comes to planning and zoning, and that's, just wanted to go on record for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole?
And I had some concerns similar to that, and I feel like, one, he's corrected the concerns that I've had, but more so, I think, perhaps getting him under our wing and educating him as to why some of these rules and regulations are in place and how they work effectively to keep our county moving forward is perhaps a positive. And I did warn him that he needed to tuck in his shirt, comb his hair, and keep his nose wiped, or else we could easily take him off the board as easily as we can put him on there, so.
I appreciate, or, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Commissioner Cole. I appreciate the rebuttal. I just do have to go on with an objection, and it's nothing personal against James at all, because if you've spent more than five minutes with him, you can't help but like him. I just can't support putting the staff in that situation, and I just want to go on record with that. Thank you.
Commissioner, will you objection? Do you have a problem with supporting, moving this to Thursday's agenda where we'll have a vote and you can officially object on Thursday?
That's fine. I will go on record to move that to Thursday's agenda, and I'll wait for Thursday with my objection on vote.
All right. Hearing no objections, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 15, Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your, this is the add-on. In December, you had a memo from Ms. Harris that in December 11th, we, the board approved the grant agreement for the elevation of the property at 3135 Harrison Street. We received a severe repetitive loss grant from the Division of Emergency Management. As we typically do, we recommend contracting with Donald R. Ward and Associates for the project manager and grants administration in an amount not to exceed $6,800, and these are paid for out of the grant funds.
Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. We'll do the engineer's report, then we'll take a quick break. Moving to the engineer's report, Mr. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a discussion of the roof replacement quotes for the Navarre Beach pavilions. These are our four Gulfside pavilions. You have in the backup three quotes that Mr. Wallace, Terry Wallace, solicited from roofing contractors, and we're recommending the low bidder meeting specification to Bill Waltham Construction and Roofing.
Any comments by the board? We'll move that recommendation to Thursday without objection. Mr. Blalock?
Item number two, we recommend approval, or will recommend approval for the final plat for Willie Glen, Phase 2B at 32 Lot Subdivision in District Three, and it's a mile and a half east on Berry Hill from Five Points, north on Luther Fowler, and the property's on the west side of Luther Fowler Road.
Any discussion by the board? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three, the add-on, Berry Hill Road. Mr. Blalock gave us a brief overview, but Mr. Blalock, restate again, please.
Yes, that will be a recommended staff rank, the engineering design professional proposal we'll receive later on this morning for a recommendation to the board to award and negotiate with the number one firm on Thursday, and that's the Berry Hill Mill and Resurface. This is a LAP project that was changed by DOT from a SCOP project.
Just for Commissioner J. Williamson's sake, that's both sides of Berry Hill Road?
Yes, he is.
And just to, we never met an acronym that we didn't love, is essentially, you recall, these have been funded with the state Small County Outreach Program grants. This is a federal local agency agreement, and this is the last one we'll get of these, trying to at least make us whole, but these are, bring all the requirements of the federal paving, and that's what we're asking.
Any comments by the board? Mr. J. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering my three-year-old, I asked my wife the other day, why does God make the road so bumpy? I think Berry Hill would be, and it was on Berry Hill Road, I think this would be a great project. This is something I hear about a lot in the Pace community, is when is Berry Hill going to be resurfaced from Pond Creek to Five Points? So, would, you know, fully support getting this thing expedited so we can get to paving, and God can fix that road.
There you go. That concludes the engineer's.
Any other comments? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Let's take about a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 10:20, 10:25. Thank you. The meeting will reconvene at this time. We are now into the Public Services Committee. Commissioner J. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items today. The first is a discussion of approval of a resolution adopting the updated Title VI plan as required for the receipt for federal funds. In your supporting documents, you'll see that this is just kind of a change, changing the name of the Community Transportation Coordinator from, I guess, Pensacola Bay to Tri-County. Is that correct? And then, this is all due to the Civil Rights Act of 1964, something. It's really, this is just more clerical, if I'm not mistaken. Would you like to add anything to that, Mr. GoMillion? So, I'd like to approve, or move to Thursday's meeting without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, we have discussion of memorandum of understanding with Pace Fire Department for fire slash life safety inspections. We have the fire chief here today. If you'd come on up, Mr. Watkins. Mr. GoMillion, would you like to give kind of a brief overview on this?
Sure. Pace Fire had reached out, discussed an interest in assisting us with our, with our life safety inspections as they do some of their routine fire planning inspections. And so, for if you, for those of you that may not know, prior to our cutbacks during the recession, we had additional fire life safety employee that, that really aided us in doing, at one point, we were doing annual inspections. Once we reduced our staffing, that became impossible to cover the entire county, unincorporated county, so we had reduced that to a periodic and focusing on those structures primarily that needed annual licensure like health care in some of those facilities. But at any rate, you have the MOU, draft MOU in your backup that sort of discusses the manner in which that would work. It would be an information sharing agreement and basically a partnering of those services. And Chief might have some other comments.
Chief Watkins, you and I were able to meet on this and talk a little bit, but if you wanted to talk to the board, if you do your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. This, Chief Donnie Watkins from Pace Fire Rescue District, 4773 Pace Patriot Boulevard. Reference this here, we discussed before, is something that, as everybody knows, Pace is growing so fast, it's kind of hard for us to keep up with it, but one of the biggest things is the safety of my men. We go into We go into a lot of these places where we don't know what we're doing, or where we're going, or what's in there, and this happened before. And so I decided a couple of years ago to try to do this, is to try to do a two-fold part, is to do a, an inspection and a pre-fire plan. A pre-fire plan is, that we have in a computer system, so when we go there, we'll know the structure layout of the building, what they do, any hazardous materials, any, any information that can get my guys on the go, get in there and do their job. And at the same time, by doing a pre-fire plan, we're doing an inspection. And the simple inspections, we're not charging nothing. This is working strictly under the county because the county has the authority, you know, authority here. So for us to do this, we'd be working hand-to-hand with Tammy and Rhonda. You know, anything we find, it would go to her quick, and if something that we see that's, that's a danger to, to the folks that's living there or working there, should be notified whether we had a caller, because we're trying to do this during the workday, and that way, we work with Tammy on anything that we can do.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions from the board? Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through to Chair Donnie, is this done on a volunteer basis, say if a business would call you and ask for an inspection, or you guys just at random?
Yes, sir. A lot of times, you know, like the bowling alley, places like this where they have a lot of gatherings, even we, we offer the churches, a lot of times, that these daycare centers that we go to all the time for fire, smoke detectors. It's, it's our job to do this as a fire chief, you know, we got to make sure that, number one, we know what we're doing when we get there, what is going on when we get there, and the information that we get before we get there. So when you have a bunch of kids sitting out there in the rain, we're trying to figure why they're out there, you know, if there's smoke there, we got to, you know, got to get this, get it taken care of. So if it's something that we can do, that we do the day-to-day work, we want to make sure it's safe and make sure that it's, it's a, it's a public service deal that we're doing.
Well, I understand that, but you didn't answer my question. Is this a voluntary basis? In other words, I own a garage in your, over in Pace, do I call you and ask you to come in and do?
Yes, sir. We can do it as a volunteer, but.
Or do you just come in, come knocking at a door and say, we're here to inspect?
Well, we're going to do like we normally would do. We'd call up somebody, you know, like Ruby Tuesdays, we'd call them up, say, hey, before you open up, can we get, like, a certain day, we can get there and do a simple inspection? Because we've had to go there for a fire before, and we didn't know where none of the equipment is, so this is, this is doing the two-fold thing, a two-part thing for us, is that, yes, it's, it's a voluntary, if they say we don't want you there, we're not going. I mean, but it's still in all that it's, it's responsibility of us as a fire department to make sure that if we go somewhere, that my men going into this building, that it's safe for them to go in, even though it's a restaurant.
And I see that as a good thing. Could it possibly help with insurance on an ISO, or?
Oh, yes, sir. Well, here's, here's the thing. We had our ISO last year, and we got actually a six, it's a 5.37, and by having pre-fire plans for all of our buildings, we'd got a five, and five minutes would have been cheaper for all the people in Pace Fire District.
Good.
So we can save them money by doing something that's not going to cost them nothing, and making, making it safe, and it's still working under the county, make sure that all this stuff is going up, that it's going over with, that, you know, it's repaired. So when it goes to Tammy, Tammy, you know, we try to get it up, like, the 30-day period, after 30 days, and when it goes back to them, then they can do something then, if it's something they had to, you know, slap them on the hand or whatever. That's going to be up to the county, not us.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see, Donnie, I support this, but I'm glad to see that it says work jointly with our Public Services Department, because sometimes some of the complaints I hear from businesses that are trying to get started up, not in Pace, but other parts of the county where different fire departments do inspections, they have different standards, so hopefully we'll be able to do it consistently and jointly with the county. So that's my comment.
Yes, that's what we're going to try to do, sir.
Great.
Any other discussion from the board? Whenever I met with the chief, one of my main concerns was, we want to have an environment throughout Santa Rosa County, but especially in the Pace area, for businesses, and we don't want to put an extra burden on them. And not so much for him, but down the line with future chiefs, I've, as electrical contractor, I've dealt where you had fire chiefs that were just, you know, they were the man, and they were the man, that's all that mattered, and they really made it tough on electrical contractors and everybody to be able to finish projects. And so I don't want to create any kind of environment where we do that, but you as a chief have a responsibility too. When you send your guys out on a call, everybody comes home and goes home to their family. So I think this will be a good thing for our community, but just know that there will be some oversight, and I don't, not necessarily you, but in the future, if somebody's being deterrent to growth and to some of the commercial businesses and the things we're trying to do in the Pace area, I know that would, that would upset, upset me, but I think this will be a good thing for the community as well. So if you don't have anything else to say, Chief, I'd like to move to Thursday's agenda without objection.
No, sir, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. At this time, we'll go with Public Works Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of request to construct fences and gates across a portion of the county's retention pond, pond partial, in the Bio Ridge subdivision located on Woodbine Road, you know, back up in your agenda for today from Mr. Hobbs and Steve Furman. Mr. Whitfield, do you have any other comments on this?
Just that we don't have any objection to this.
Okay. Hearing that, if there's any questions or comments from the board, seeing none, I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of request from Gulf Power Company for blanket utility easement across county-owned parcels located both north and south of Fenwick Street in Holly by the Sea. Again, you have backup and maps on this. Mr. Whitfield, any problems with this?
Again, we don't have any objection to this from Public Works.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners down there, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask to move to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Mr. Chairman, on Thursday, I'll abstain, since this is my old company, but at this time, I'll move it to Thursday, well, move approval without objection.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Public Works Committee agenda for this week.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you very much, Commissioner Cole. Sorry I got you confused. At this time, we'll move to Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have seven items today in Budget and Finance Committee, and also want to be providing a quarterly budget snapshot, our status report, as we move along throughout the year, and the first quarter just ended, and Ms. Bell has provided basically just an update that says there's no significant variances in our budget forecasts, or revenues are on track. We've collected 87% of our ad valorem taxes to date, which is characteristic of this revenue stream, and all of the revenues, excuse me, are performing as expected. Our expenditures are also on track. So just wanted to provide that snapshot to my fellow board members this morning. Bid actions, item number one, discussion of bids received for home substantial rehabilitation project located at 5685 Mullett Road in Milton. Low bidder meeting specifications is Joe Baker Construction Incorporated with a bid of $29,450. I would ask that this item be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, Budget Amendment 2015-91 in the amount of $11,026 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for scanners for the Planning and Zoning Department, and the Engineering Department has approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I would ask that item number two be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, Budget Amendment 2015-92 in the amount of $76,720 to carry forward funds for engineering services with Hatchmont McDonald for the Peter Prince Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project reimbursable from FAA grant, as approved at the January 8, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, and ask that this item be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four, Budget Amendment 2015-93 in the amount of $20,000 to carry forward funds for background screening of volunteers in county parks and recreation facilities, as approved at the January 8, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' meeting. I'd ask that this item be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five, Budget Amendment 2015-94 in the amount of $21,067 to carry forward funds for the follow-up site inspection for Santa Rosa Shores Canal in the Santa Rosa Shores Canal MSBU Fund. I'd ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six, Budget Amendment 2015-95 in the amount of $2,000 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for an industrial drill press for mosquito control, as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Ask that item number six be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Just to comment on that, I asked that possibly we look at this, it says for an industrial drill press, but I'd ask that the board allow the, I guess, the accessory items for the drill press to be allowed to be purchased under this request, giving them a $2,000 cap, i.e., perhaps a new drill index, drill vice, items like that, that are necessary to use the drill rather than come back to us again for those items, but again, put the $2,000 cap on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Roger, would you like to? Yep. Is there any action that needs to be taken on that, just to amend the language to include that it would have a cap, or do we need to take a separate action another time?
All you're doing is creating the budget how to pay for it. We'll, this just gives us the budget authorization. We'll take care of them.
Okay.
Just moves it from the capital account.
I would ask that we move this to Thursday, then, without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven, County Expenditure Check Register, I'm still reviewing, Mr. Chairman, but I'll have to by the end of today for Thursday's meeting. I would ask that that be moved to Thursday without objection, and that concludes my report.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Anything else from the commission staff? This time, we'll have public forum. Anyone from the public wish to address the board? Hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.